Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'll call back into open session. This meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for August 2nd, beginning at 7:20 PM. Thank you all for coming out to join us tonight. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony, and please join Dr. Reich, who just walked in. Put the pledge of allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please silence your cellphones and join me in a moment of silence. First item on our agenda is programs and presentations. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. I would like to recommend the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal of Williams Elementary, the assistant principal of Lamar High School, assistant principal at Sam Houston High School, the dean of instruction of Lamar High School, assistant principal at Bowles Junior High, assistant principal at Ferguson Junior High, assistant principal at Gunn Junior High, assistant principal at Hill Elementary School, and assistant principal at Little Elementary School.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Reich, second by Mrs. Peña. All members present voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Mr. Pampa and Mr. Hibbs cannot be with us this evening.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, I'd like to introduce the new principal at Williams Elementary, Mr. Mark attended West Texas A&amp;M University and has a Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies and attended the University of Texas at Arlington for his master's. He has been an assistant principal at Goodman Elementary School from 2002 to the present and has taught 5th grade at Everman ISD. Mark, congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say? Anybody you'd like to introduce?
President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity. It is an honor to rejoin the staff at Williams Elementary. They are a hard-working group, as I remember. I would like to give a special thanks to my beautiful wife, Kimberly, for her support that is constant. When you agreed to marry me, I got the better end of that bargain.[254.54][254.54](Laughter). I'd also like to thank my dad, who is the most patient man I ever know, and he showed me how to put others before myself. He passed away a year ago, but I still hold him as a role model. I'd like to introduce my mom, a veteran teacher, Lila Kamla, who's also the daughter of a veteran teacher, my daughter Hannah, also my in-laws, Julen Ivor-Kendricks, for joining me tonight. I would like to thank mentors, informal and formal, who have helped me and guided me along the way, Barbara Tapp, Dr. Cardenas, Gary Mans, Tara Albert, Selena Elizondo, and Dr. Malcolm Turner, who have guided me along the way. To the staff at Goodman, I want to thank them for having the courage to stand up and do the good work with me, and I appreciate all the work that they have contributed to the students at Goodman. And to the staff at Williams, I am excited about joining the staff there, and I know that there are good things to come.[324.81][324.81](Applause).
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce the new assistant principal at Lamar High School, Mr. Trent Dowd. Trent attended Baylor University in Waco and Dallas Baptist University for his master's. Trent has been an assistant principal at Bailey Junior High and a math teacher at Bailey Junior High. Trent, congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say or anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. First of all, I would like to thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited. I've gotten to have, I've had the opportunity to have several conversations with Dr. Harmon and other staff members at Lamar High School, and I want to tell you, there are a lot of very exciting things going on at Lamar, and I'm very honored and very excited to be a part of it. This evening, I do have my wife and my son. My son has the pacifier in now, if that tells you anything.[390.00][390.00](Laughter). But my wife is a very big support and encouragement in my life, and so I'm very, very thankful to her.[402.28][402.28](Crying) That's why the pacifier was there.[406.69][406.69](Laughter). And also Brayden, my son, he is also a very big support, and he's a big reason that I do what I do as well. I'd like to thank Dr. Harmon for this opportunity. I'm very excited talking to him. He is so positive and so encouraging about all the good things that are going on, and so I'm excited to get in there and start fighting the good fight with him. I'd also like to give a special thank, thank you to a mentor of mine, Tiffany Benavides. She's been the principal at Bailey Junior High while I was there, and her leadership that she has shown to me has truly been inspiring. And I want to thank her and thank her for allowing me to serve as assistant principal there the last two and a half years, and I promise you, you will continue to see great things at Bailey because of her leadership. So thank you very much, and look to see great things at Lamar. Thank you.[464.13][464.13](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Sam Houston High School, Mr. David attended the University of New Mexico in Albuquerque and received the Bachelor of Science in Education, University of Texas at Arlington, where he received his master's. David is an assistant principal, was an assistant principal, at Trimble Tech in Fort Worth and has taught 7th and 8th grade mathematics. David, is there anything you'd like to say? Anybody you'd like to introduce and congratulations?
I'd simply like to say thank you, President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. It's an honor to join the Arlington Independent School District. I'm very happy and proud to be joining the family at Sam Houston High School and very extremely proud this evening to call myself a Sam Houston High School Texan.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new dean of instruction at Lamar High School, Dr. Kristi Miller.[532.16][532.16](Applause). Kristi attended the Indiana State University and received her Bachelor of Arts in Science. She got her Master's of Education in Curriculum and Instruction from Indiana State University and a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction from Indiana State University. Kristi has been an instructional specialist in Nimitz High School and has been college instructor in Indiana State. Kristi, is there anything you'd like to say? Anybody you'd like to introduce and congratulations?
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I would like to thank President Barron and the rest of the school board for taking a chance on me and you, Dr. Cavassos, as well. I know that God has truly blessed me with this opportunity, and I don't take it lightly. I'm ready to accept the responsibility that I'm here to serve your school district and your teachers and your students, and I'm ready to go. I'm very excited about being here. As far as introductions, my family's not here tonight. My husband's home with our two-year-old, but I do want to thank, I figured she'd probably rush the stage if I got up here, so, yeah, she loves mommy. But I do want to say thank you to him, Tony, because he is a stay-at-home father, and so that allows me the opportunity to be a great mother as well as a great career woman. And I wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for him. And my mother's home watching, "Hi, Mom."[611.91][611.91](Laughter) Put away the Kleenex. And I just want to thank her for, you know, supporting me in my career and sometimes pushing me in my career, but last but not least, I would really like to thank Dr. Harmon. I've heard I've got some pretty big shoes to fill, replacing him as dean of instruction. I only wear a size 7, so I don't know how that's gonna be.[629.41][629.41](Laughter). But I'm glad that he's still here and working with me at Lamar to guide me. I know he's a great educational leader and just an all-around great person, so I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to work for him and to serve your students. So thank you for this opportunity.[643.54][643.54](Applause).
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Bowles Junior High, Ms. Andrea Andrea attended the University of Iowa, where she received the Bachelor of Arts in History, and University of Texas at Arlington for her master's. She was a teacher at Ferguson Junior High, a history teacher, and has taught at Cedar Hill and Lewisville as well. Andrea, anything you'd like to say? Anybody you'd like to introduce and congratulations?
To President Barron and the board members and Dr. Cavassos, I am extremely thankful for this opportunity that you all have given me along with my new principal, Ms. Providence, and I look forward to wholeheartedly serving the students and parents and the faculty and staff at Bowles Junior High School. I'd like to thank God for giving me this opportunity and bringing me to this position in my life, and I'd also like to thank my parents, who've gone on to glory, but I'd like to thank my parents, Doris and Reese Harmon Jr., for being just awesome and supportive and loving and exemplary in every way. Tonight, I have here with me, well, my husband couldn't make it tonight, but I would like to thank him for being very supportive, and I'd like to thank our wonderful kids, Reese and Brent, who are right there, as well as my mother-in-law, who is also awesome and very supportive, Ms. Shirley Robbins, who's here. And I'd like to thank a few people who have been instrumental to my professional career as well. That would be Ms. OJ Kemp and Ms. Beverly McReynolds from Sam Houston, where I first became a Texan when I came to the district. And I'd also like to thank my administrative internship mentors, Dr. Melissa Halbrich and Mr. Steve Dunn, who just really taught me so much and worked with me, and I would not be where I am today without them. So I thank you, and I look forward to this wonderful opportunity to serve.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at Ferguson Junior High School, Ms. Latisha Haynes.[774.38][774.38](Applause). Latisha attended the University of Texas at Tyler and received her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, Lamar University for her master's. She was a campus instructional coach in De Soto ISD and has taught Spanish and IB Coordinator in Lancaster ISD. Latisha, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say? Anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to President Barron, the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Cavassos as well. Buenas noches. Es un placer estar aquí. Esta noche con ustedes. And I'm just saying the same thing here.[814.23][814.23](Laughter). I just want to say that I am very, very excited to be a part of Arlington ISD and a part of the community, la comunidad aquí. I am, I have, I've heard that Mr. Bowman is an excellent, excellent leader to come up underneath, and so I'm very excited to know that I'm gonna be taking a part of his leadership team there. Mr. Dunn that's there has already welcomed me in. He gave me the tour of the homeland today, and so I've been, I've felt very welcomed with them as well. Also, as far as professionally, I'd like to say that I have had several, several mentors, and I thank God that they are still able to mentor me, but I must start where it began, and that's with my mother. She is here, Lynn, Lynn Reddick, she's here, and along with her twin sister, Linda, beside her, and my uncle at the back, Tommy Vaughn, along with his wife, Wanda Vaughn. And I just want to say, with my mom standing there, that she has, she's still been teaching for a while, about 28 years, and she is the person that taught me to be a leader and to do what I need to do for students. And I think I started teaching, what, at home, in the room? My sister was my classroom, I mean, my student. And then over here, I cannot go on without saying thank you to my family. They are a support. If they were to ask you what they've done this year, it's probably help her pack for UIL coordination, help her get ready for the mentees, for the mentor program or something. And so they are always helping me. My husband is at the back there with my baby girl, Trinity. Trinity, she's not looking this way. You want to wave?[944.13][944.13](Laughter). She wanted to sit up front with mommy. And my, my baby boy here, oldest boy, only boy, DeAndre, is in the 10th grade, and then I have my daughter, who will graduate this year, and that's Jasmine, and so I, I am a people's person, a children's person. I'm just excited to be here. Thank you all for the opportunity. Oh, and I want to say to Dr. Aubrey Todd, Dr. Cheryl Ensley, superintendent, Dr. Mike McFarland, all of those are my mentors, so I've had good leadership and I'm ready to help now.
It's my pleasure to introduce the new assistant principal at Gunn Junior High School, Mr. Marcus Heaton.[1001.01][1001.01](Applause). Marcus attended the University of Tennessee and received his Bachelor of Arts in History and also got his Master of Education from the Nazarene University. He's been an assistant principal at Tipton County Schools in Tennessee since 2008, and he's taught 8th grade English, Science, History at that level. Marcus, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say? Anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, sir. First, I would like to give thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for blessing me with this opportunity. I would like to thank President Barron, the Arlington ISD School Board, and Dr. Cavassos. I would also like to thank Chevia Dollar for giving me this opportunity, and Ms. Kim Peach, who will also join me at Gunn Junior High School and on the administrative team. Back home in Tennessee, I would like to thank my mother and father, who are watching tonight, as well as my brother and my sister, my son, Sean Ellis, my former high school, Covetown High School, and my mentor, Peggy Murdock, here in the crowd. I would like to, please stand up, sweetie. Thank my future wife, Ms. Andrea DeBose.[1077.08][1077.08](Laughter). I would like to thank my future sister-in-law, Ms. Sherri DeBose, for the DeBose family watching back home, and I humbly, once again, humbly accept this position with Arlington ISD, and I look forward to the great things that we will accomplish at Gunn Junior High School this year.
This time, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at Hill Elementary, Ms. Kimberly Stellwagen.[1109.47][1109.47](Cheering and applause). Kimberly attended Ball State University, where she received her Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education, University of Texas Arlington, where she received her master's. Kimberly's a 5th grade, was a 5th grade math and science teacher at Sterrett Elementary from 2000 to the present, has taught bilingual education in Houston ISD and 3rd grade bilingual in Pasadena ISD. Kimberly, congratulations, and anything you'd like to say or anyone you'd like to introduce?
President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I am so excited to be working for Mr. Day and become part of the Hill family. Thank you very much.[1153.01][1153.01](Laughter). I'm very excited. After 21 years in the classroom, I'm looking forward to this new opportunity in administration. I want to thank my husband, Richard, who has been a great support system to me, and my boys, Cole and Joe, and then I have my parents, who, sorry, who've been very instrumental in my life.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at Little Elementary, Mr. Devin Very high expectations, Mr. Boland.[1208.23][1208.23](Laughter). Devin attended the University of Texas at Arlington, received his Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, Concordia University for his master's. Devin's been a 5th grade teacher at Morton Elementary School and a 6th grade teacher at Morton. Devin, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say or anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you. I'd first like to thank President Barron, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Cavassos for this opportunity. I feel very excited and privileged to start my administrative career at Little Elementary with the staff and Ms. Bethann Woodward. None of this would have been possible without some great administrative mentors. I'd like to mention Stephen Paulson, Jana Martin, Erica Rab, and John Peterson. No matter how busy they were, they always found time for me, took an interest in me, and showed me tons, gave me lots of experiences and examples that led up to where I am today. Sorry for all the ums, but (laugh). Also, like, my parents and family is here, and I just wanted to tell them that they're very supportive in me chasing all my goals and ambitions, so thank you. And to the Little staff, I'm looking forward to working with you and alongside them. So thank you very much.
It's our custom to greet the new appointees, so if you will all join Ms. Evans to go out to the lobby, and then the board will follow, and if everybody else would let the All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back. Action items. First item is to consider the Tasby Board Policy Update in '94. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, I'd like to ask our attorney, Heather Castillo, to review briefly the proposed revisions to policy FFAF local.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. This will be brief. We usually have much bigger policy updates. This is a, an update with one policy in it. It's a brand-new policy, and it's based upon the need from the last legislative session, some legislation that requires districts to put together guidelines on how we're going to care for, how we're going to treat children with a diagnosed food allergy that may cause a life-threatening anaphylactic shock. So this is a policy that you have in your packet, and I know we had a closed-session legal discussion about some additional revisions that we would like to make. So you've got in front of you the local policy in your packet, so both under general procedures and under students at risk for anaphylaxis, we're adding, well, under general procedures, we're adding, and it's basically just for clarification, that this policy is for the purpose of putting together procedures to limit the risk posed to students with diagnosed, and it's gonna be medically diagnosed, food allergies who are at risk for anaphylaxis. And then you've got your 1 through 5, those general procedures. Then we also will have administrative regulations that Tasby has proposed, which administration has reviewed, and the really good news is, is that our Food Service Department is light years ahead of this legislation, that this is state legislation, but our department, our Food Service Department, in going through this policy and talking to Jackie Anderson, our Food Service Department already does a lot of things for students and for parents who have food allergies. They already have forms and processes and procedures to make sure that we make those adjustments in kids' diets and that we keep things that kids are allergic to away from kids who are at risk. So again, the policy that's in your packet, under general procedures, you've got the Tasby policy, and then the language in blue is that we're going to add to Tasby's proposed local policy is, the way it will read, general procedures, procedures to limit the risk posed to students with medically diagnosed food allergies who are at risk for anaphylaxis. And under students at risk for anaphylaxis, we're going to add the term, the word medically right before the word diagnosed, just to clarify again that what we accept are doctor's notes, medically diagnosed students, that's who we're going to apply our procedures and our regulations to. And that's the way the policy is being recommended from administration to the board for approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Reich, second by Mrs. Peña. Is there any further discussion? All voting in the affirmative, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Castillo. And I apologize to our speakers tonight. I skipped an item. This is the open forum for agenda items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I have two cards from our audience this evening. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation, and when the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Richard Weber. His subject is the Chamber of Commerce contract.
I think you check non-speaker or else I check the volume.
No, you check non-speaker, and, thank you. We are rolling tonight. Is that it? Okay. In that case, our only speaker is Michael Jarzabsky, speaking on the strategic plan.
President Barron, Dr. Cavassos, and board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Michael Jarzabsky, president of the United Educators Association. Last year was a hard year. We went through a lot. I never got so many emails from teachers that I, in the entire time that I've been an officer of UEA, and they weren't all positive, as you know. But already, I've seen a change in the tenure and the feeling in this district, and I want you to know that I'm very excited. People I've talked to are excited. When I've already had meetings with some of the central administration, I see them smiling more. I went to the luncheon where there was the, Dr. Cavassos- I went to the luncheon where there was the, Dr. Kavassos was talking to the community about your strategic plan, and it was very open. Dr. Kavassos talked about collaboration, which, believe me, when you talk about collaboration with teachers and you want to treat them as professionals, you will have them on your side. And as President of the United Educators Association, the largest association, I'm pledging our support to help you with this plan, to make it a success, to make our district what we all want it to be. I'm looking forward, I haven't looked forward to a first day of school like this in probably five years. And part of it is just the attitude change I've already feeling in the air, plus the fact that I'm going to be team-teaching math and science, so it's a change for me. But besides that, I really am looking forward to this year. So, let's collaborate, let's work together, and let's make this a truly remarkable year for Arlington School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarzabski. All right, let's back to the action items now. Our second item is, consider designation of official delegates to the Tasby 2012 Delegate Assembly. And the two delegates that are going to be nominated are...
We can motion to nominate them.
We'll get there. All right. Okay. I make a motion that I will be the delegate and that Mrs. Sullins will be the alternate delegate.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Barron, second by Mr. Hug. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we're considering the endorsement of a candidate for the Texas Association of School Boards Board of Directors. Position 11B. D like dog. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to support, endorse Ms. Fay Baloo, who is currently a director in position for 11D, and that we provide her our support.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Peña, second by Dr. Reich, to support and endorse Mrs. Fay Baloo for position 11D on the Tasby Board of Directors. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative. Thank you. Our next action item is to consider ordinance number 132, setting the 2012 tax rate. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, I'd like to ask Cindy Powell to discuss the tax rate and setting of the tax rate. Ms. Powell?
President Barron, board members, Dr. Kavassos, good evening. Tonight, we are actually taking the very last step of our normal budget adoption process. We are adopting a tax rate for the 2012 year. In years past, you are all familiar, and we've all been very comfortable with adopting the tax rate the same night we adopt the budget. But as everyone knows, we have changed our fiscal year, and so our new fiscal year begins July 1, ends June 30. So we adopted our budget in June, before the certified property values were available, and we base the tax revenues in that budget on an estimate of our certified property values. So, state law requires that appraisal districts release certified values on July 25th, so we have now received our certified values from Tarrant Appraisal District, and we are very pleased to report that information to you this evening and propose a tax rate for your consideration. This year's tax rate, certified tax values, rather, from Tarrant Appraisal District are actually about 2% higher than last year. The values are $19.8 billion. So, $19.8 billion. They are $410 million higher than last year, and again, that's about a 2% increase, and that is the greatest increase that we've seen since 2008. New construction actually accounted for about 30% of that increase, and the remainder was from reappraisals of properties. So based on our property values that have been presented to us, we are recommending to the board that we adopt a total tax rate of $1.301 cents. So it's just slightly over $1.30. This is actually a decrease from last year's tax rate of about a half a penny. The actual decrease is .0045 cents, so about a half a penny. The decrease is entirely on the debt service side, as you can see here. We are proposing the tax rate of $1.4 for maintenance and operations and a tax rate of .261 cents on the debt service side, again, for a total of $1.301 cents. I will remind everyone that as part of the truth in taxation process, we issued a budget notice, a notice for a public hearing on the budget and proposed tax rate in June, gave opportunity for, through a public hearing, for people to speak on the proposed tax rate. And the rate that we proposed at that time was the same rate as the 1112 rate, the $1.3055 cents. And by law, you can set a rate up to that amount when you actually adopted. And so, we are now coming back with our certified values, and we're able to propose to you all this evening that you adopt a rate that's actually slightly less than what we anticipated in June when we published that notice. The higher values actually will generate additional revenue for our general fund. And we've talked for years about target revenues and about the state funding formulas, and we are actually a formula district, which means that we actually generate money above the target, the guaranteed minimum amount, in the state funding formulas. And so changes in property values, up or down, will either generate more revenue or less revenue for us. And so, the higher property values will generate an additional $2.5 million for the general fund at the same rate of $1.4 that we levied this past year. What you see on the screen are the particular accounts within the general fund that are affected by property values. And again, the highlighted box in the bottom right, $2.5 million is the total overall gain to the bottom line on the general fund side. On the debt service, there's no change in the revenue. What we have here because of the higher values is instead an opportunity to lower the tax rate to generate the same dollars that the board adopted in the original budget, the dollars that we will need in order to service our debt for this upcoming year. The debt service rate can actually be lowered again by about a half a penny from what it was last year and still generate the $56.5 million that we need for our debt payments this upcoming year. So the next step for the board is to actually consider adopting the 2012 tax rate, and again, you see the summary here of the rate that we are proposing board consider. I do want to point out that the, that state law has some very specific language that school districts have to use when they adopt a tax rate. And what you see in quotes here is the language that we are required to use for actually adopting this year's tax rate. We are, again, we're lowering our total tax rate from last year, but we will generate more money than we did last year in total because values are higher. And so the state requires that we issue a statement that says that effectively, that even by keeping the rate the same or lowering it, we'll be generating additional revenue. So that's why it's worded like that. It's a little awkward, but that's the intent of that law. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about our property values or tax rates.
Mr. Hug? Mrs. Peña?
Are we required to submit another notice?
No. You are only required to publish another notice if you come back and you want to adopt a tax rate that's higher than what was published in that original notice.
Thank you.
To make this absolutely clear, because I'm going to read it, we're lowering the tax rate.
Yes, sir.
So no matter what these words say, we're lowering the tax rate. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.301, which is effectively a .39% increase in the tax rate.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Barron, second by Mrs. Peña. Any further discussion? Please vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative. The motion passes, and we are...
Lowering the tax rate.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. The next item is a discussion action item to consider the strategic plan. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This is an important event in our school district. It's an important time. This is something that many, many people have been looking forward to within the district and certainly our public. And so tonight, we present for adoption our three-year strategic plan, our Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow strategic plan. So I want to touch on some of the highlights of the plan. I'll warn you ahead of time that there's a lot of detail that follows this plan, but I'm just going to give highlights, the highlights of the plan, so the public can get a sense of our expectation. So it's important to set a context of our school district and where we are today, and then to look to the future and where we want to be. Today, our school district has a promise to deliver a more-thanremarkable education. Our population in our city is over 365,000. Our enrollment in our school district is over 64,000 students. Over 42,000 students are enrolled in fine arts today in the AISD. We are consistently named one of the best communities for music education. It's important to note our district demographics. We're 42% Hispanic, 25% white, 23% African-American, 6% Asian, 2% Other. Continuing with the context of our district today, last year, students received over $31 million in scholarships. Over 700 students are enrolled in dual-credit classes. We have over 16 different career pathways and over 450 internship opportunities for So the question is, what's next for the Arlington Independent School District? Where do we go from here? And we look to the strategic plan for that guide to look to tomorrow, to improve and deliver on that more-thanremarkable education promise, and to become a premier school district. And I've often said that we're the ninth-largest district in the state, and it's our responsibility to be in the forefront of that pack, not in the middle, not trying to catch up, but for our district to be in the front. And that takes innovation, creativity, and collaboration with our staff. The importance of a strategic plan, from the board's perspective and administration's perspective, is to have a strong focus on student achievement. Student achievement is the foundation of the strategic plan, and it should be. However, it also includes other areas of the school experience that are important in our students' lives, with a clear direction and specific outcomes, that in that, we maintain our district's commitment to utilize our resources in the most efficient and effective way. Arlington ISD has a tradition of fiscal responsibility, and we pledge to maintain that same fiscal responsibility throughout the strategic plan. And also to expand the scope of our focus, the It Starts With Me campaign, that this strategic plan allows us to demonstrate that and to live that, that it's everybody's responsibility in the school district to improve the achievement of students, but not only in the school district, in our community, and with our partners. So the development of the strategic plan included a very long process that allowed administration and the board to calibrate and determine what the best path would be for the Arlington School District. So at this time, I'm going to pause and ask Mr. Hug and other board members, if appropriate, to discuss the process that we went through in the development of our strategic plan.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. This is one of the key factors of this plan. A strategic plan is not made in a short period of time. This is a long, tedious process. And you'd ask any of us up here tonight, we're glad to see it finally coming forward. But you see in even some of those pictures, we took the focus groups, we took the input from parents through surveys, discussions, we took the input from retirees, senior citizens in the community, we took the input from staff, we took the input from parents, and I think the most important aspect of who, if I had to say who was the biggest impact to our board and all the senior staff of the input we took, was it was the student panel we brought in of all the broad-ranging students, not all just high-performing students. We had those students that are on the bubble, and we had those students that aren't performing. Because guess what? We've got to teach every student. And so with that, we've been in this process for just almost a little over a year now on this process. And the key input to this entire thing was how do we get the input from the business community? How do we get the input from senior citizens? How do we get it from retirees? How do we get it from current staff? How do we get it from parents? And most importantly, how do we get it from students, so that we are teaching the students the way it needs to be? I thank everyone for their time on the input, and I think it's a critical factor to this. With that, we did multiple meetings, a long process. We brought in United Way to show us their focus groups of what they did is through surveys. We also did multiple all-day meetings, not just the board and not just the staff, we all did it together in long meetings, lots of brainstorming. And I have to thank Roz Keck from Into Learning that we brought in from the outside to help us facilitate this entire process, to give us that outsider's point of view, to give us the outsider's point of view from national thought leaders on education. We're not looking at just what works in Texas, what works in Arlington. We're saying, what are they doing globally that's working, and how do we bring that in? And Roz helped us facilitate to bring in that kind of input from multiple levels of how we make the best district. It's a short summary.
Dr. Reich, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. Very excited about it, but little words tonight.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Hug, I would also like to thank the board subcommittee members that put so much work into this. Our board is governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act, so we don't meet as a group of seven and go through these things. We have to break into a group of three, and I have to applaud Mr. Hug, Mr. Pampa, and Dr. Reich for the work that they have put in to the strategic plan. I have another group that I'd like to thank, too. Mr. Hug talked about the stakeholders and the many discussions we've had with many of you. But in the past several years, we've had so many community members that have faithfully attended and signed up to perform community service work, participating in our citizens' committees. Your thoughts and your discussions over the years were with us at these tables. So I'd like to, this evening, thank the Bond Advisory Committee, the Financial Futures Committee, the Bond Oversight Committee, and the Citizens Action Committees, the CAC, for the tremendous number of hours and thought and work and discussion so that we could collaborate with you as well. So we have the accumulation of years of discussion... So we have the accumulation of years of discussion in the strategic plan. I appreciate your work.
So as we continue with the strategic plan overview, it's important to discuss who we are. And who we are, we frame that with a set of beliefs. And first, we believe that a commitment to a clear and focused vision will guide the district to the highest performance. The board and the administration felt very strongly that this would be our first belief, that with a focused vision, it could guide our district to high performance. Also, that effective teaching and leadership are essential for student achievement. Research has validated this over and over, and it's important that we set this as a belief, that it is the effective teaching and leadership that's essential for students to be successful. But not only that, that also the school environment impacts achievement, where students learn, the type of environment, the safety of the school, the learning space, the technology, that all those things are important for students to achieve. And also that an engaged community is essential. And an engaged community goes beyond partners or involvement. Engagement is when they're actively participating with us in meeting learning objectives. Also, that every student can succeed, that not a few, not some, not in certain grades or classes, but that every single student in Arlington ISD can succeed. So we move to our vision statement. Our vision statement is very clear, is to be globally acknowledged as a premier school district. I mentioned earlier, the premier school district for us is important. It's important that those things that make a premier school district be implemented in our schools. Our mission statement is to empower and engage all students to be contributing, responsible citizens, reaching their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. And so if you just take a moment to look at those words and the power in those words, is to engage all students and not only in the learning process, but for them to be contributing, responsible citizens beyond the state test, beyond your curriculum assessments, that you're actually contributing and being a responsible individual in our community. And as students maximize their potential, that they work to their potential, they put all effort, and that's our responsibility as well. And accomplish that through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences, that the experiences students have in the classroom are filled with innovation, with rigor, and that they're very relevant to their lives. That kind of learning environment is very different. It's one that yields a premier school district. So the question is, what do we want to accomplish? And we set that in a framework of objectives. And so we start with 100% of our students. And when you first see 100%, you may think, well, that's all of them. And indeed, it is. And part of that thinking is that we plan for everybody's success. To have anything less would be planning for some students not to be successful. And in a premier school district, one that has high levels of student achievement, it's important to plan for every single student's success. So that's where the 100% came in. So 100% of the students will graduate on time and excel at their school or career of choice. If you take those words apart a little bit, 100% of students will graduate. You stop there, that's a heavy lofty goal for all students to graduate. We don't have that in our district or in Texas or in the nation. But continue on, will graduate on time, within four years, that they meet their graduation requirements. And if that wasn't enough, that they excel at their school or career of choice, that beyond what they do in high school and in our school system, that students are successful and excelling. And what that means is that students would have been equipped with some tools and skills so that they can excel. That students, 100% of students, reach their full academic potential. And part of that is knowing and understanding what student potential is and what the potential of students, so that they can reach it. That 100% of the students will be actively involved in extracurricular and co-curricular activities, that beyond the classroom, beyond the academic portion of schooling, that students would be involved in other activities. And we feel those activities are so important that we feel all students should be involved in. That 100% of the students graduated as lifelong learners. And that's one that has gathered a lot of attention, because to be a lifelong learner is well beyond when you're in school and when you're in our school district. And we view that as equipping students with skills and experiences that generate that lifelong learning. And 100% of the students will graduate with a commitment to their community. Commitment to their community as they exist in our school district, but well beyond that, that once they graduate, they're also committed to our community. So if you look at those objectives, there's a good balance of academic objectives and learning objectives, but also the type of student that we want to graduate from our schools. The next logical question is, how will we achieve our bold objectives? We have 11 goals in our strategic plan, and we've categorized them in three areas. And we call that our framework for success. Area one is inspired learners. And if you think of the word inspired learners, that's well beyond just learning. When you're inspired to do something, it's a higher level of achievement. That we have effective leadership and that we have an engaged community. And that's our framework for success in accomplishing our objectives. So we'll go under the category of inspired learners. And there's a goal under that, that AISD will be high-performing, technology-rich school district with leading-edge learning experiences that promote engagement, creativity, critical thinking, and achievement. Another goal under that inspired learners is that the AISD will prepare our graduates to excel in higher education or career of their choice. That our school district will be a leader in the education marketplace by providing world-class facilities while being fiscally responsible. That we define for Arlington ISD the type of facilities that our students will be learning in, and that they be world-class. Another goal is for the school district to provide a safe and secure environment. Another goal is that AISD teachers will ensure all students, I'm sorry, will ensure that all teachers are highly effective. And that that highly effective teaching is supported and is encouraged, but supported through collaboration, through professional development, through the best teaching practices. Many, many teaching practices that exist in our school district are outstanding. Part of the task is to connect those teaching strategies so that all students benefit from them. The next category is that we have effective leadership. A goal under there is that we will recruit and retain the most effective people by rewarding excellence and providing opportunities for continual growth. Simply put, we recruit the best, we retain the best, and we reward the best. Another goal is that we will foster a caring culture of respect, integrity, wellness, and citizenship throughout our district, well beyond the academics and the achievement in terms of test scores and graduation and promotion, that students are in a caring culture, that our employees are in a caring culture. That we'll create an environment and cultivate an environment that builds great leaders, and great leaders from students, teachers, administrators, all aspects of our district, engaged in leadership activities. The last section is engaged community. And the goal is that AISD will actively engage and partner with parents in the educational experience. And the important words there are educational experience, that when we engage parents, that we equip them with information and resources so that their children can meet learning objectives, so that their children can graduate from high school or learn to read or learn to do math. Another goal is that our school district will enhance the educational excellence and workforce development through collaboration with community partners, that our community partners are valuable and important in this process. And you'll see demonstration of that as we move forward with our strategic plan. That we will utilize all the communication channels to maximize awareness and support of the district's vision to be globally acknowledged as a premier school district, that we will communicate, communicate with internal employees and internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders. And that we will deliver on that promise of more than remarkable education through our Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow Strategic Plan. And I want to just take a moment to thank as well the board members for their commitment to this process. Everyone involved in this process dedicated a significant amount of time. And I'll go to one more slide of our next steps, because this also shows our commitment to the system of integrating this strategic plan and implementing it. We're going to have three days of training with our principals and assistant principals and central office staff in this plan. We're going to have a State of the District on August 13th, where we will continue the emphasis on our strategic plan as well as give an update on our district. We're going to have a kickoff celebration for staff on August 21st at UTA College Park Center. And then we will be implementing the plan from 2012 to 2015. And now I'll go back and officially thank the board and others who were involved in this process. This has been a learning experience, I think, for all of us, but it's also demonstrated the commitment, the commitment that staff and administration and the community have to this school district and the importance of our students being successful and how that impacts every facet of this community and this nation. So with that, Mr. Barron, that concludes the presentation.
Would you like to make a motion? Go ahead.
Thank you, President Barron. And before I make that motion, I will take a moment of personal privilege to, first off, thank my colleagues. We all put a lot of work into this, and we've been doing this for a long time. And I think it's really started to pay off. And I have to thank the staff, we all, working with the staff, really having the open minds and integration really shows a lot. Anytime you institute change, it's a tough thing to do. A lot of guys have made a lot of money on a lot of books about how to implement change. So it's never an easy task. But I have to thank everyone for the way we've implemented and the way I've seen principals start to see, man, this is a really good thing. Just right before I walked in, Mr. Nix, one of our recruit, reward, retain the best principals out there was like, how can people not like this? How can they not be excited over it? Well, I can tell you, there's a lot of ways. Anytime you change something, there's a lot of ways. But I think as principals have started to see it, and I think as staff start to see it, and I think as the community sees it, we all see the good things that are coming from this. And as Dr. Kavassos, I've heard that presentation a lot, and we've sat through it a lot, and I love it. Every time I hear it, and all that starts popping in my brain is all the action plans that are planned, all the things that are coming off of those goals and how we're going to accomplish some of those things and how we've already started the discussion. This one's not even passed of how do we plan the next one that's going to be a five-year strategic plan. This is looking down the road for a vision for a district. And I'm very proud of everyone at the AISD. And after a long, long time of work on this with Dr. Reich and Mr. Pampa, I'm very proud on behalf of the Strategic Plan Committee to make a motion to pass the 2012-2015 Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow Strategic Plan.
It's from committee. Okay. And for the discussion then? Go ahead.
I would just like to also let our community know, this plan we are very passionate about is not something that will be shelved. We didn't make a very pretty, long document that will sit on a bookshelf somewhere and collect dust. In order to ensure that that is the case, we have, being a very data-focused board and a data-focused district, there are measurables, specific metrics that are tied to every single goal, every single action item, that we are going to continually monitor and have frequent reports on our progress on every one of those items for this plan to ensure that we are making the correct progress and that we are tacking in the correct direction. So I think it's very important for everybody to understand that. This is a lot of work, and we're not going to let it slip away whatsoever by not going that final step in measurement. So that's all.
Thank you. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative, we have a strategic plan. Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. Ms. Powell.
President Barron, board members, Dr. Kavassos, it's my privilege this evening to present our first donation report of the new fiscal year. Our schools have received donations from the following individuals and organizations: The Community Foundation of North Texas, Nystrom Herb Jones, Arlington High School Choir Booster Club, the Arlington High School Orchestra Booster Club, Arlington High School Band Booster Club, Arlington High School Boys Soccer Booster Club, RSI Visual Systems, Arlington High School Backstage Booster Club, the Arlington High School Boys Basketball Booster Club, Bowie High School Football Booster Club, Lamar High School Band Booster Club, Lamar High School Girls Soccer Booster Club, Lamar High School Football Booster Club, Lamar High School Girls Basketball Booster Club, Mark Peace, Lamar High School Aquatics Booster Club, the Texas Health Arlington Memorial Hospital, Martin High School Orchestra Booster Club, Vandergriff Toyota, Martin High School Band Booster Club, Martin High School Tennis Booster Club, Martin High School Golf Booster Club, Affiliated Bank, Jerome Sobel, Spring Creek Barbecue Number One, Texas Healthcare, Martin High School Cross Country and Track Booster Club, the Martin High School PTA, Bahama Bash, Martin High School Swimming and Diving Booster Club, the Martin High School FFA Booster Club, J.C. Penney, the Arlington High School Counselors Association, Spring in the Park Music Festival, the Bailey Junior High School Band Booster Club, Life Touch National Studios, various businesses and individuals, Kathy Beisner, Yvonne Redliff's, First United Methodist Church, United, excuse me, United Methodist Women, New World United Methodist Church, Bryant Elementary School PTA, the Duff Elementary School PTA, Edgar Ortega, Moore Elementary School PTA, the Altrusa International Sector Foundation, Julian Gonzalez, and Atlas Family. The total donations presented for your consideration this evening are $147,123. And since this is our first report of the new year, that is also the year-to-date total to present to you. We also have three bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening, and in all three cases, the administration recommends the lowest bids and the bids representing the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, and thank you to our generous community. Before I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, I've got Mr. West Jury in the audience. Mr. Jury, would you like to go to the podium, please?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anything you'd like to tell us about the chamber contract before we vote for it?
Thank you. I'm truly feeling privileged and honored to be here with you this evening, because this has been a long journey and a commitment we made. Ms. Chog, I have to make a comment about change. I appreciate what you said. Remember a quote that said, "Change can be debilitating when it's being done to you, but it can be very exhilarating when it's being led by you." And I want to, first of all, congratulate you for taking the leadership role in leading change. And I think if what we say to people is, the change is going to be more students graduating, more empowered teachers, more excitement, more community engagement. I had an employee years ago who said, now, those years ago who said, no, those are good changes. And I think people can quickly embrace that. We're pleased to be your partner. We're pleased to report to you that for the first time in the history of the State of the District event, it is sold out. We cannot put any more people in the room on the 13th of August as you present this new strategic plan to the community. And not only is it sold out, but it's sold out to leaders of this community. When you talk about engagement, you're going to see the community's leadership in that room, waiting to hear from the Arlington ISD about how we can more effectively engage with you. You're going to hear about new plans that we put in this current contract after two years of pilot testing. I'm pleased that the Rotary Clubs, Tarrant County College, and UT Arlington have all come together to launch a new initiative, Partners in Education, as a part of what we do together, that will link together four key and distinct programs, beginning in the third grade, identifying a student's interests based on their inventions, carrying them through Rotarians who will be mentors after school and junior high, to Tarrant County College faculty who will come after school to help make sure that they're qualifying for dual-credit programs, to UTA stepping in their senior year to ensure they're ready for that transition to higher education, all targeted at the at-risk youth population. We're launching a new pilot program on STEM, as you know. And so there are many new facets to what we're doing as we keep growing this partnership focused entirely on one thing, the 64,000-some students, who we all have a vested interest in, in terms of their excellent education. And I heard Dr. Kavassos the other day say something worth repeating. When someone says, do you really mean 100%, the question is, well, do you want your one child to be the one we don't think about, care about, and commit to? Of course not. Every one of those students represents the potential to do something special in this community, and we want to renew our commitment to you this evening and let you know that we're pleased, honored, and privileged to work with you as one of your partners in education, and look forward to the future. We think it's bright.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Move to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Dr. Raish, second by Mrs. Sullins, to approve the consent. Is there any further discussion? All voting in the affirmative, the consent passes. We have no discussion items. It brings us to the open forum for non-agenda items, and there are no cards. Superintendent's report. Dr. Kavassos.
Mr. Barron, I'd like to report that we signed a memorandum of understanding with UT Arlington, Mansfield ISD, and TCC, where students will have a pipeline for higher education, and students will have the opportunity to take dual-credit courses with us and receive up to 24 credits, and then transfer those to TCC, where they continue to get their associate's degree, and then at a highly discounted rate at UTA to complete their bachelor's degree. So when we talk about a seamless opportunity for students to receive their higher education, and one that's affordable, this is a demonstration of that. So I was privileged to represent the district in signing that memorandum of understanding. Up to $10,000.
She wants the discount.
You want the discount? Okay, well, we'll work on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. Board members' reports. Mrs. Peña.
I just wanted to give a tornado update. As everyone knows, on April 3rd, my house was hit by the tornado, and it's been approximately four months since that happened, and I can tell you that happily, last night was the third night we got to spend back in our home. And I'm ever so grateful to all the community for their help and support, the city of Arlington, and doing a wonderful job in supporting all the tornado victims. I know there was another member of the staff here in the building who is a neighbor of mine who also was hit, and she has been in her house for about three nights now as well. So progress has occurred. Happy camper, there's a lot of little things left to do unpacking the boxes, but thank you, everyone, for all your help, and I'm just such a happy camper, you can't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peña. And I have a very short report. I had the pleasure today to attend a retirement ceremony at the Corps of Engineers Building in Dallas for Mrs. Peña, retiring with 37 years' service to our country, and we thank her sincerely. And Representative Patrick gave her a flag that had flown over the State House on the Fourth of July, and a whereas that went on forever. This was a two-page whereas, folks. A great resolution listing all of Mrs. Peña's great accomplishments with the Corps of Engineers, and we thank her and congratulate her for her service. And there's one more picture, isn't there, Spence? Maybe not. Okay, that was it. Was it the second one?
I saw the first.
Okay, there were two. It's my fault. Anyway, congratulations, Mrs. Peña, on a fabulous career with the Corps of Engineers. Mr. Hogg.
Mrs. Peña must have started working when you were 10. Wow, that is amazing. Usually you make that joke, and they didn't really start that young. Mrs. Peña, you really did. Congratulations. We all look forward to that day one day, hopefully sooner. I would like to take a moment and thank one of our citizens, Ms. Lysanne Peters. Many of y'all know her throughout the community. And Lysanne does something every year that most people don't really know about. Every single year, she funds completely out of her own pocket for teachers to do a week-long teacher training in Williamsburg, Virginia, under Colonial Williamsburg. It's an application process, you must apply, she selects two 5th grade social studies teachers and two 5th grade, I'm sorry, two 8th grade social studies teachers that go in and teach. And it is truly an amazing program. And luckily, my wife, who is a 5th grade teacher, was one of the teachers selected this year to go and attend. And I'd always heard of the program. I didn't realize how much work they really did while they're there, because they're putting in 16-hour days. But it's one of those programs, and then they come back. They not only learn this, but then they present to the other teachers in the district at 5th grade of how to incorporate new teaching techniques into learning about the American Revolution. And it's those little things that one woman did and funds completely out of her own pocket every year that makes a major impact, of something that a district could never fund and do itself, because it's not a cheap program. And it is one of the most amazing places out there. And so I just had to take a moment and thank Ms. Peters for doing that, because it's that kind of outside-the-box thinking that can really make a district change and take that little extra step. So with that, I thank her.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Secretary, any notes for tonight?
None recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, we're adjourned.